Members of the City Council, please attend the call. Meeting of the City Council to be held in the sixth floor conference room at 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM Tuesday, June 28, 2016, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Dr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Meeks?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes. Vice Mayor, members of City Council, during this evening's public work session, we have three presentations. I will introduce all three presentations and then the first will start its presentation. Our first presentation is an annual Virginia Port Authority update by Mrs. Sarah McCoy, who is with the Virginia Port Authority's Manager of Government's Community Affairs. Mrs. McCoy will share information on the port's business activities and cargo volumes, its expansion and automation plans, and other news about the Port of Virginia and its success. The second presentation this evening is with Mr. David R. Rose, the city's financial advisors from Davenport and Company, LLC. At the request of City Council approximately 60 days ago, a pension governance study was ordered and has been conducted. In FY 2009 and 2010, the city convened a Blue Ribbon Commission to evaluate the Portsmouth Pension Systems and made several recommendations, including issuing pension bonds to improve the funding status of the systems. In FY 2013, the city issued $168 million in pension bonds to improve the funding status of the retirement systems. As a follow-up to those actions, Davenport recommended taking an independent review of the governance of the city's pension systems, which they did, and they are here to present their report and their recommendations to improve and strengthen the systems. Our last presentation this evening will be the legislative update on the outcomes of the 2016 General Assembly Legislative Initiatives. This presentation will include information on legislative initiatives, outcomes, next steps, and new laws and ordinances impacting local government. We have three presenters for this segment. They shall be Ms. Sherri Neal, Attorney Solomon Ashby, and Mr. Bob Baldwin. We'll begin with Mrs. Sarah McCoy's presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me. If I need to speak up, please let me know. And if you'll help me with that, that would be great. So again, my name is Sarah McCoy. I work for the Port of Virginia. Tonight, I would like to give you an update on just what's going on at the port with an emphasis on infrastructure development as we ready ourselves for larger ships. That means larger surges of cargo, and we need to, as a port, be able to handle that efficiently and effectively. Last year, when I was here, we talked about the increase in cargo volumes year over year. Well, that hasn't stopped. We did experience some congestion last spring. We worked out of that congestion, and the infrastructure development that we'll talk about tonight is really to get ahead of any kind of congestion that could come with these larger vessels, larger surges of cargo. But with that being said, if we could just make sure everybody understands when I'm talking about the Port of Virginia, underneath that marketing title, the Port of Virginia, those are three legal entities, the Virginia Port Authority, that's the political subdivision, Virginia International Terminals, that's our operating subsidiary that does the day-to-day work at the port, and then the Hampton Roads chassis pool. But we at the Port of Virginia can't do what we do on a daily basis without working with our local, regional, state, and federal partners at every level, and that's one of the important reasons as to why it's important that we check in with you all here in the city of Portsmouth. Because the work we do has a direct impact for the city of Portsmouth. What you're looking at are some of the top 10 port users located within the city limits of Portsmouth. This list vacillates from time to time, but this is the top 10 port users in calendar year 15. And in calendar year 15, our totals show that over $230 million worth of cargo flowed out of the city of Portsmouth through the ports of Virginia, and that equates to about 85,000 tons of cargo flowing out of Portsmouth each year. If we drill down and look at that impact on a Commonwealth-wide level, we're looking at about 530,000 jobs here in Virginia are directly or indirectly related to the work right here out on the Elizabeth River. That's about one in every 10 jobs in the Commonwealth has some kind of connection to the work done right out here in your waterways. This equates to about 10% of the overall gross state product. So it has a big impact. It's worth doing, and that's why we do it every day. You'll keep going. So in our business, there's many ways that we measure ourselves. One of those ways is cargo volume. We had a record year in fiscal year 15 in the amount of cargo that we moved, 2.5 million containers. But what I want you to really take away here is the modes by which we're moving these containers. Truck is the number-one mode that we move containers in and out of the port. That had the highest increase in fiscal year 15. But what I want everyone to know is trucks, yes, they can be a nuisance, but also trucks can mean that that cargo is staying within a 250-mile radius of our port. So that means that it's staying in Virginia, having no local impact in Virginia. But what we're working to do is make sure that we're only moving the cargo that is meant for our region by truck, and then we are using every other mode possible to get it up and out of Hampton Roads as efficiently and effectively as possible. So that means we're really examining ourselves and trying to put as much cargo bound for outside of our region by rail and by barge, and those are the numbers that you're seeing flanking the truck volume. So we had an increase in rail, just over 4% in fiscal year 15, and an increase in the amount of cargo moved by barge to almost 11% in fiscal year 15. Those numbers are anticipated to grow at the close of this fiscal year. So again, if it's not bound for our region, let's get it up and out using another mode besides our roads. The other way we measure ourselves, just like you businessmen and women here in this room, is our finances. So what you're looking at is our operating revenue as we're coming out of the recession. So from fiscal year nine to fiscal year-to-date, 2016, that's the shorter and last bar at the end. You're seeing we had an operating revenue growing year over year, but where the rubber really meets the road is in our operating results. If you look at the middle of this screen, that's zero. So even though we were making revenue, we weren't making a profit. So in those years out of the recession, we weren't able to invest back in our infrastructure. Another port, up and down the East Coast, our competitors who are vying for this cargo, they were systematically making investments. So in fiscal year 15, you see, we got up and we're in the black. We got our financial house in order, and we are able to make these infrastructure developments that we need to remain a competitive port on the East Coast. What you're looking at at the very last column is fiscal year-to-date, 2016. We anticipate that we'll finish out this year just in the black, but the reason we weren't hoping to make a significant profit this year is everything we made has been going back into the facilities very systematically, and we'll get into more depth as we go forward. So this investment is key because we're in a rapidly changing industry. Some of the hot topics that we at the port are drilling into every day and addressing are, one, this lack of investment, and how do, now that our financial house is in order, how do we start making these investments? What are the key investments, the biggest bang for our buck, to help us handle the larger ship sizes? We all know the Panama Canal, after what has been a very protracted construction schedule, is now open. So what this means is that we, here in Virginia, are getting larger vessels coming through the Suez Canal and through the Panama Canal. So before, when the average ship size would handle 3,000 or 4,000 containers, ships carrying about 8,000 to 9,000 containers are routinely calling our ports. In fact, the largest vessel to ever traverse the Panama Canal will call Norfolk International Terminals on July 10. So this vessel will carry just over 10,000 containers. So they're coming. They're coming on a regular basis, and what that means for marine terminal operators is we're getting bigger surges of cargo. So we now need to process what before was a thousand boxes, now is 3,000 boxes in the same amount of time so that those motor carriers can get on and off the facility, and ultimately the goods can get to market in an efficient manner. So that's an area that we're researching. And then this ability to serve those discretionary markets. We want to make sure that cargo that could be going to Baltimore or could be going to Charleston and Savannah are being funneled out of the Port of Virginia. That means tax dollars. That means jobs for Virginians if we're capturing that cargo and really harnessing our strategic location right here on the Mid-Atlantic to capture that cargo. So to do that, we are making some key infrastructure developments and construction projects. So if we start at Norfolk International Terminals, what you're looking at here is a rendering. With the help of the General Assembly, they just passed a budget that included $350 million for Norfolk International Terminals. This is the largest single investment that the Commonwealth has made in port infrastructure ever. And so what this allows us to do is optimize this facility. If you look at the south yard on the right side of this drawing, you see how the boxes are more densely stacked. We're able to invest in technology and innovation to densely stack those containers, and as a result of this technology, we're going to be able to increase capacity at Norfolk International Terminals by 40% without expanding at one inch. So we're using the existing footprint, using technology, and we're creating a safer work environment that handles more containers. So this project kicks off this fall and will be completed by 2019. And so what the state's infusion of capital really allowed us to do is, one, target this project, but freeze up the money that we made that you saw in those other slides to really invest throughout our entire network. So thank you, state, for freeing up this project so that we can go target some other ones. The next project that we're targeting is at Virginia International Gateway. This is the facility located right here in Portsmouth on Highway 164. This is a facility that the Port of Virginia leases and operates with our landlord, the Alinda Group. They are the owners of this facility. And what we're doing with the Alinda Group is working in a public-private partnership to build out what you see, this greenfield site just adjacent to the existing facility. This, again, is a three-year construction project that will commence in 2017 and end in 2019, and this will double the capacity at Virginia International Gateway, and so it will handle two times as many containers as it presently handles today. This is an ambitious project schedule, but this existing footprint was constructed in three years. We've learned a lot of lessons, and we believe that we can, again, execute the second phase of this facility as well. This is a rendering of what it would look like upon complete build-out. If we go to the next slide, you'll be looking at Portsmouth Marine Terminal. Again, this is right here in your city, right as you are headed into the Midtown Tunnel on Highway 164. This facility, as you know, was shuttered when the former facility, Virginia International Gateway, came online, while its cargo volumes continued to steadily increase. It was imperative that we bring this facility back online as we needed it to handle the increased cargo volumes. We brought it back online in fall of 2014, and it really served as a pressure-relief valve for us to handle the increasing volumes. This facility has done its job. It has helped us get out of that congestion. It is handling, it did since 2014 up until recently handled primarily containerized cargo, but going forward, we believe that this facility is very well-suited for mixed use. So we mean both containerized cargo and what we call project cargo. This is anything that doesn't fit in a container. So the recent example, a success story for Portsmouth Marine Terminal, was the attraction of wind blades. If any of you have driven past it recently, you see upwards of 35 different wind blades that have used this facility, and we've worked very closely with your city manager here to get those wind blades up and out of Portsmouth and ultimately to a wind farm, final destination in Elizabeth City, North Carolina. So energy markets, those are things that we're targeting as we go forward with Portsmouth Marine Terminal as a mixed-use facility. If we keep going, what our goal has been is to target simultaneously landside infrastructure and waterside infrastructure. And last year, we signed an agreement with the Army Corps of Engineers to do a study that said, "How deep can we feasibly dredge our harbor?" We are currently at 50 feet of depth in the main channel and then 40 feet of depth in the Elizabeth River. We have been congressionally authorized since 1986 to go to 55 feet of depth. Now the time has come that the larger ships are calling, and it's anticipated that we might need to go to 55. That's what this study is going to render, and they'll say what the feasible depth is that we are allowed to dredge to, and so that study will conclude in 2018, and preliminary engineering and design, we hope, would commence in 2019. And what's important to note is, when this dredging does occur, where are we putting these dredge spoils? That would be the Cranny Island Marine Terminal. You see it on the map. It's designated with a little yellow block in the C-I-E-E, Cranny Island Eastward Expansion. And so as we dredge, we'll put those dredge spoils in the Cranny Island Eastward Expansion and build the next marine terminal. So we're really fortunate here in Virginia that we have the capability to build out another marine terminal. Most ports, as you know, are in very industrious, highly populated, densely populated areas, and they don't have the capacity to build out in the way that we do. So we're timing this to make sure that we're on track for this build-out as these cargo volumes necessitate. So as we go forward, I kind of just want to walk you through the timeline so that we're all clear about what infrastructure is happening when and how we're getting prepared to handle these larger volumes. So what you're looking at here is a rendering of our harbor. It does not look like this today. We're looking at it from the Portsmouth side. You're looking at Virginia International Gateway, and so if we look at what our harbor would look like in the next five years, we will have completed the build-out of Phase Two of Virginia International Gateway. On the upper right-hand corner of your screen, you're looking at Norfolk International Terminals. We'll have completed the optimization of that south yard that the state has helped us to fund, and in 10 years, we will have completed all optimization of NIT. We'll have begun dredging, and you'll start to see the first cells of the Cranny Island Eastward Expansion coming online. In 20 years, those cells will be complete, and it'll look like this picture today. And if you look just north of the Cranny Island Eastward Expansion, you see a little white line. That would be what the third crossing would look like. So this is a glimpse of the future. We have a path forward. The plan is in place. We have readied our financial house, and we're ready to start implementing these infrastructure projects. We would welcome, if anyone would like to visit any of the facilities we've talked about and see it firsthand, we could certainly arrange that. But with that being said, I defer to you for any questions.
Dr. Patton, with all the increased capacity we're seeing, how will that financially benefit the city?
Well, Dr. Whitaker, that is something that we are discussing and beginning to meet on. We know that, in fact, there was a meeting today on VIG and its expansion. We know that, and I saw in her presentation where there are going to be four new cranes. Right now, it is our understanding that the state, if the state purchases the cranes, then the city will not be able to realize any revenue off of them. Also, it's been shared that if cranes come off, and we asked, "What is the capacity, life capacity of a crane, those that are out there now?", I could not get an exact answer, but my response was that a crane that's built comes all the way from China. Its life expectancy is longer than 10 to 15 years, I would think. I would think it would be at least 20 to 30 years. But as the cranes come off, and if they are purchased through the state, then we would lose the taxing of the cranes as they come off. So we're just trying to position ourselves and have discussions to see just what can we do. When I hear a figure of 1.2 million more containers, my comment was, even if the city could get one cent off of each container, look at the money over 50 years, 30 years, or two cents, and I didn't get any comment when I made that statement, but we've just got to look at different ways in order to realize revenue as, you know, they continue to build, they continue to expand, and VIG will start at the end of the year, increasing their breadth or their bay to, right now, they're 15, but they're going to take it all the way to 30. And so that would mean additional cranes and things coming in. But we're in conversation. In fact, just last week, for the first time, I visited with Mrs. Neal and Mrs. Butler, VIG, and it was just, it was just an amazing visit. I never, ever imagined what was happening over there. And one of the things that struck my attention is that the workers who they have over there now have been completely retrained. The mechanics that we are training to, you know, just to be the mechanics that know how to fix trucks and cars, all of that is automated and computerized. Those mechanics are making six-figure salaries, but this is a whole new wave of being a mechanic. And if we're teaching kids to be a mechanic the old way, they aren't ready for all the jobs that will open, and there will be more jobs over there that are just technological jobs. And I don't know his council ever visited VIG and taken a tour?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
With the increase in the ship size and the larger capacity, I think you mentioned 10,000?
Yes, sir.
Containers, they're going to end up, a good portion of them, going to end up on the streets. What's being done to anticipate the traffic concerns?
Right.
Which leads me to the, not only the taxing of the cranes, but maybe payment in lieu of taxes, because there's going to be a lot of expense associated with that, and I take it with the port expansion, I believe that we're responsible for the fire protection and public safety protection of the port.
Well, the blades, wind blades that are being moved, and I think they came out of China, all of that coordination for them to get through the city at night, they don't travel, the cost of that is being paid by the company that's having them, and that's police and all of the coordination through engineering and planning.
We might want to think about some strategy for payment in lieu of taxes through our legislative team up in Richmond.
That's what we're...
Right. So you're absolutely right. When I started it off, we have to make sure that we're not flooding local streets with this truck traffic, so making sure that only cargo bound for local areas is using truck and that, as much as possible, we're converting that to rail and barge movements to get it up and out of Hampton Roads. But another thing that we can do as the Port of Virginia is try to attract federal money to help with our local transportation projects. An example of that would be, just this past year, a new federal stream of funding was made available. It's called Fast Lane Funding. So the Port of Virginia sponsored a project in concert with the city to expand Highway 164, so adding another lane in either direction, so it would take it from a total of four lanes to six lanes. And so we were able to file this application, and many scratched their head and said, "The congestion's not that bad on that road," but it's an anticipation, exactly to your point, if we're adding this capacity. And so we made the argument to the federal government, as the ships get bigger, bigger surges of cargo, we want to make sure our surface transportation is ready to handle it. And so that's just one example of how I think we should continue to work together to address getting that last mile in and out of our ports, ready and prepared to handle this, so it's not such a great impact on our local streets. And then in payment in lieu of taxes, I don't want to steal anything from your legislative team's work, but they did restore that funding formula to pre-recession values, which Sherri will share a little bit more about. So it's a start, I know, but, so we've got to partner together. We've got to, we can't just add capacity inside and not talk to anybody about it, and so that's one of the things that I aim to do, our team aims to do, to work with you all hand in hand.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Just a comment. And really, Mr. Moody said most of what I wanted to say, but, you know, $230 million flowing through Portsmouth.
That's it. Through Portsmouth.
Yeah. $300 million investment by the state in Norfolk, all the trucks getting off Portland Roads. So I know that, that money restored, I mean, that's real good, but that's not even a drop in the bucket.
Not at all.
It's not even a raindrop compared to what we've got to do to make sure these roads are kept up to date, and I would beg to differ to whoever says there's no traffic on 164. They don't try to get in Norfolk in the morning about 7:30, 8:00.
Right.
So...
Back down.
It needs to be at the top of our legislative agenda, and we need to be talking to our legislators about this now, not when the package is ready, because this is all great, all good news, unless you've got to pick the potholes and take the calls about the potholes, unless you live on the other side of the wall and got to hear the trucks running about and run it all night, and unless you've got to get the calls from citizens who's got to live with that. So those are the things we've got to continue with, from our perspective, that your bosses or whoever need to be conscious of what we have to live with, and our citizens have to live with each and every day, and we're not getting anything, comparatively speaking, for what our citizens are going through. When you look at this briefing and talk about the investments going through and made in other places as opposed to Portland.
Jim, colleagues, a point about the lane expansion and those who live on the side of the road there, especially in the west Norfolk area. Gee, I guess it's been six years ago now, some money was allocated, $2 million, to extend the sound wall, and I like to think that that money is still residing somewhere, and I think the caretaker was actually the ports. We need to look...
So the expansion of the wall was not done?
No. The money was allocated, I think, actually from Congress, and...
Federal government.
It was $2 million, and I think the snag was on some utilities that needed to be moved, a major sewer line and perhaps even water, but those people, when they expand the road, they're going to definitely need that sound wall.
Okay.
So we need to revisit that.
We will investigate.
$200 million, just invested, a couple million would have gone a long way for the sound wall.
Exactly. You're right.
The $350 million for Norfolk International Terminals is going to a facility that's owned by the state, so the $320 million that's going for Virginia International Gateway is investment with a private entity that does pay real estate taxes. So what it's important to note, to your point, Councilman Cherry, is when we are investing in expansion at Virginia International Gateway, that does increase real estate value and thereby real estate taxes. So there is money coming to Portsmouth?
What's important to note is that it doesn't do anything for the citizens who live in the corridor that we just talked about, nor does it do anything to alleviate our paying in lieu of taxes. I hear what you're saying, but this is not going to sell today, right now, because we've been living with this for a long time and waiting for a, how long has that sound wall been on the table?
Gee, six, seven, eight years or more.
And we can't find a couple million dollars, but we've got all this money for all this other stuff. I hear what you're saying. We appreciate all that, but the little things make mean a lot to our system. Might be small to you, it's big to us, big to them, and that's more important at this point, because they're paying the real taxes in the city every day, and they don't have the volume that you have to make it. They've got to get up in the morning and go get it. That's all I'm saying.
Vice Mayor, I think we should all understand that shipping across the world is becoming very lucrative, and we all are aware in my short 301 days that the state is very, very interested in the VIG with, you know, all kinds of shell things going on. I think where we must position ourselves with the upcoming legislature and our voices is making sure it is understood that Portsmouth has to have some piece of the pie in this whole process, and we cannot be a city that the eight, right at $8 million that we are receiving right now through taxes, that it goes away. I mean, we just can't sit back and allow that to do it. So it's going to be very important that we put our strategies in order, and you, as the elected leadership, make it be known to the state that we've got to work this now, sooner rather than later. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. McCoy.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next presenter is Mr. David Rose with the Davenport.
Thank you, Dr. Patton. We've got...
He can sit there.
I'm nursing a herniated disc, so I'm standing. We've got handouts as well as the full report, and so we made...
I think they have the handout.
They've got the handouts and the full report?
Yeah, they have the executive...
Okay. Y'all do? Good. Okay, fine. I would think so, yes. Let's get the full report to them. I would think so, yes. Let's get the full report to them, if you don't mind. Okay. I'm gonna talk off of the executive summary, which is about eight pages. Our full report is almost 30, so you'll have the details.
You're talking from which one?
The, the executive summary, the smaller one, yes. I may, I may reference the larger study as necessary, Councilman Sherry, but I think for time purposes tonight, I just wanted to give you an overview. Does everyone have a copy? I'll just wait a moment. Okay. All right. Thank you. If you just turn to, um, the first page there, if you would, Debbie. A little bit of background, as Dr. Patton said a few moments ago, about 60 to 90 days ago, uh, we were asked to do a study and look at the corporate governance of the pension system. We did that with the support and help of Dr. Patton, her office, Alice Kelly, meeting with a number of folks, including having some very helpful meetings with some of the trustees of the pension system itself. And so, I don't know if someone there here in the background that we met with, but again, we did that as well about 30 days ago. And we tried to incorporate all of those pieces into the study. And our study basically, uh, you could see there, uh, was based upon about six or seven different pieces of information. We looked at, just so you know, there is basically a half dozen systems in Virginia, and Virginia really is the critical one. Um, we're talking about cities of Fairfax, Roanoke, Norfolk, uh, we're looking at Richmond, uh, Hampton, uh, those are the places, uh, basically that we looked at to try to get a sense of what they were doing, what the best practices were, were they following those best practices? We had discussions with all the various stakeholders, John Hancock, the investment advisor, uh, and thereabouts, all to put this study together. So, with that said, um, our goals and objectives of the study really were to make sure that the city was doing all it possibly could to make sure that this very significant amount of investment was maximizing the opportunities and not doing anything reckless, uh, not missing certain things. And so, when we looked at all that, um, what we came up with was basically a series of recommendations. We compared it to best practices, uh, we looked at some of the input, some of the input, as I said, from the Board of Trustees, uh, we're at the current pension system. And then lastly, but certainly not least, we looked to the Blue Ribbon Commission from '09, and we are pleased to say, and we were very impressed with the work that that commission did. There were six main recommendations that the Blue Ribbon Commission made, and five of those six were indeed things that were made into reality, uh, especially the first one, and that was to get to 80% funding as quickly as possible. You may recall the systems were at 28% and 32% respectively, and to do that, the pension, the Blue Ribbon Commission recommended doing pension bonds, which we indeed did, and we did them very successfully several years ago. The one thing, though, the one glaring recommendation that was not followed, it hasn't been followed to date, has been the number three right there, uh, consider long-term funding costs before entering into any COLAs, and that was not implemented. As a result, where we are today is there have been some COLAs, and we are not at that 80% threshold. The goal at the time that we did the, uh, we did the pension bonds was not just to be at 80%, but to go from 80% upwards to 100% over several years. Today, we're roughly in about the 73%, 74% range. Now, why do I bring all that up? Because, as you know, and I've been here before, just a few months ago, the city has done an excellent job of maximizing and enhancing its investment-grade ratings with the rating agencies. In fact, the last meetings that we had, uh, we had a negative outlook taken away and moved from a negative outlook on the city to a stable outlook. And so, again, we were moving in the right direction. When you think about it, we have basically around a quarter of a billion dollars, or slightly less, of actual monies that are being invested. That's almost equivalent to the size of the general fund that you have every year to make work. So, from our perspective, and I know we echo what Dr. Patton and everyone in the administration recognizes, and that is, we do not wanna put the city inadvertently into harm by having a pension system that's not looked at as being where we recommend it being, which is at least 80% funded. And so, one of the things that our pension governance report determined is that we need some tighter review, some tighter standards, as it relates to making sure, for example, the total ramifications of adding COLAs are done ahead of time, so that if indeed we do a COLA, however big, however small, it doesn't bring us below that 80% funding. Okay. So, that said, on this page here, we've got a series of goals and objectives of what we'd, we'd consider very good, solid pension governance. And so, again, I don't want to, for the purposes of being here, to reiterate what you can read, but one of the things in the middle there, for example, is enhancing the probability that goals and objectives, meaning investment return, risk management, responsibilities to the beneficiaries, the plan participants, will be obtained. One of the things that we see right now is that the current investment policy is a mere four pages. It does not get into a number of these things to put you, meaning you, meaning the pension system, into a system of maximizing, as we said, the probability that you're going to meet your goals and objectives. And then, of course, as we said there, ensuring that the pension system has sufficient funds to meet its long-term obligations, as well as that funding ratio at least at 80%. So, then we said, let's look at the Portsmouth pension system per se, and what are our key observations? So, there are a number of observations here, and I'll follow that with the recommendations.
So, are these, these gonna ask the question on enhancing the probabilities?
Um, yes, sir.
Okay.
We think if you, let me see the observations first, if I count, Councilman Sherry, but then I'll talk about what we think needs to be done to maximize your chances of getting there. And I'll give some specifics. Again, the written report that you have actually goes into specific numbers, percentages, recommendations, it drills down into the things I'm just trying to give you a very brief overview of. So, the first thing we have observed is the pension system does not currently have a comprehensive governance manual or policy document with regard to board practices and policies. Not to say that the policies and practices are not well-done, but you do not have something that really is a roadmap. The second thing we noticed is that there is a significant portion of the assets in one investment vehicle. That's not typical. When you look at the other six or the other five entities, you look at best practices, you'll find that it's far more diversified. Just to give you an example, um, and you can find this under page 13 of our report, one particular fund, the Schaefer-Cullen Dividend Opportunity Fund, almost 50% of all of your monies are being held in that fund. The problem with that is that's way too heavy a concentration, and number two, that fund is a dividend fund, and the problem with that is you have as a target 7.25% to be an average return. A dividend fund cannot even come close to meeting that particular result. Now, that is not to say that that Schaefer-Cullen fund is not an excellent fund. I don't have any commentary on that. It may be a great fund, but its returns are woefully under 7.25% because it's not meant to yield that type of return, it's that type of limited-risk vehicle. So, that's just one example. Then we said, although the city's pension board composition is consistent with those of other local pension systems we reviewed, there are really no specific board member criteria. Again, certain of your members have very good experiences with finance and other related matters, but as you turn over these various positions, we'd like to recommend that you have a series of criteria that you try to follow, so that the boards are as strong as possible. The next, in comparison to the policies of other local government systems reviewed, the city's investment policy could benefit from further enhancements. And again, you go back to this report and the details, we actually specify some of the things that all the other systems have, but you do not have, as it relates to your investment policy. Then we talk about quarterly reporting. We believe that there could be ways to improve that, okay? So, again, not to belabor all this, but we saw a number of these things where there were shortcomings. So, you'd ask, Councilman Sherry, what is it that we recommend? Well, we have basically 14 recommendations, and in this report in the back here, or I should say next to it, is some more detail behind that. But the first is, we recommend that you develop a governance manual, as outlined in our study. Actually create a manual. Second, include all board policies and practices as a component of that governance manual. Third, specify the clear responsibilities to be assigned of one or more key staff and personnel. What you have right now is folks like the finance director in an ad hoc way, being of help as asked or trying to be of help, but it's not delineated, it's not specified. There's no accountability, if you would, to make sure that certain things that are happening, checks and balances, if you would. Then we recommend developing and implementing a written set of board practices. Again, trying to get this to be as codified as possible. Then we recommend establishing board member criteria, all with the goal of making sure that board members have relevant investment and financial market expertise as well, and that's gonna be important. Then we recommend establishing term limits for board members. Even though there may be some sensational board members, we think it's helpful and healthy to turn that over. No different that every set of years, you turn over an audit process to a new set of auditors, have a new set of eyes, we recommend that as well. Then number seven, um, we recommend that a board policy deals with actual or perceived conflicts of interest, no matter who it may be, as well as those that are related parties, be it board members, as I said, consultants, et cetera. And speaking of that, very much right up the front of our report, just so you know, we are your financial advisor. We are only doing this report, we have no interest, and would see it as a conflict, mind you, if we were asked to do anything further than this report. So, having said that, I may have the firm's ability to do these things, we are, in our view, blocked from doing any of those things for you. That way, we are not being self-serving, we're simply providing you an initial overview, an analysis, and then we're going to recommend that you actually procure some professionals from the outside that have nothing to do with Davenport directly or indirectly, that would help you. And that really is jumping ahead to number nine, and that is to obtain an independent investment advisor that can help you develop a more comprehensive investment policy, look at your investments in the context of comparison of other data and how you're doing, how you're doing with your own asset management, your allocations, are you meeting your criteria? You know, it's a little bit like this, when, in this report, we show you have seven and a quarter as your goals. Over the last three years, when you average your returns, they are multiple away from meeting your seven and a quarter return. And in fact, compared to the other five entities, your returns are way below all the others on a three-year average or a five-year average. What we're seeing is someone or some entity, not being us, would come in, has no bias, and says, "Let's take a look at whether or not that Schaefer-Cullen fund may be terrific, but that Schaefer-Cullen fund, if I could use the analogy, is like going into a football season and expecting to win on a regular basis by only kicking field goals." You might win once in a while, but you cannot win only kicking field goals and not going for touchdowns. And so, again, maybe not a perfect analogy, but the idea here is you really have to up your game, and the only way to do that, from our perspective, is to understand and compare yourself to others, look at your own investment strategy, and ask, "Is there some more risk that we can afford to take?" Because from our perspective, you can't afford not to take it. Because again, when we did those pension bonds, we talked about having, on average, a certain return. Those pension bonds we borrowed was a little over 4%, very, very good rates, and the average returns we talked about had to be approximately in the high fives to around 6%. Every one of the other entities in Virginia that we compared you to over three and five years have been above that 6%. They've been able to meet that. You've been below that. So, again, we are recommending that you take a harder look at not only bringing some outside review, but also to take that Blue Ribbon Commission and add that last recommendation that they made. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I appreciate it.
The item number nine, the independent investment advisor.
Yes, sir.
Who's doing that present?
We don't have an independent investment advisor.
Well, who is giving leadership to this area?
Um, Dr. Whitaker, in my short tenure here, the retirement board has been just an entity that made their decisions in regard to who invests the money, um, who they select as the investors, and that has been the way it has been.
So, then, who, who was that investor?
Um, the investor for them is a gentleman.
We have a gentleman named Arlie Pritchard, is the investment advisor. He works for Morgan Stanley, Morgan Stanley right now, and he, um, he just changed firms, that's why I just wanted to make sure. And we use John Hancock for our actuary and our administrative services to issue the payroll checks and whatnot. And so, um, the retirement board votes on an investment advisor and the actuary firm and the administrative services for the retirement system.
So, the board has had the authority, based on how it is set up right now, to do all of that, absent of elected leadership really knowing anything about it.
And so, we're recommending, Dr. Whitaker, that that is not, in our world, sufficient enough to give comfort to us, and we recommend that you procure an outside investment advisor. That individual working at Morgan Stanley is actually investing some of the monies, that's not, we have no problem with that, but we think that there has to be greater accountability. And we did speak to that individual, um, and so that's the point here. There's not that oversight. And I will, even if I could, if I could, Dr. Patton, um, you'll notice on pages four and five of this report, the big report, we actually have some of the quotes from some of the Board of Trustees that we met, and you'll notice here, if I could, when I mention that COLAs, this is an actual quote of one of the, one of the individuals said, quote, "No detailed analysis is done prior to approving a COLA." That gives us great concern, because again, the Blue Ribbon Commission recommended that be done, we're recommending that be done, but we, speaking here, have no ability to effect that.
So, so, in essence, we have our professionals who are on a retirement board that's overseeing...
Well, you all, you all appoint the retirement board. Yes, sir.
I know what you're saying, so that's the setup that basically we have now, that we suggested that we move away from that and use an independent.
What I would suggest, you've got certain people that have some very good expertise on that board, and they have, they are professionals in different walks of life, if you would, including some folks with investments. What we're really suggesting, though, is there would be a series of recommendations and policies that you could create, and you have that ability as city council, so that as some of those people either leave or term off or what have you, you can then make sure that you infuse that board with people that really do have all of those experiences.
Number five would be a description of what the recommendation is, of who council determines is on the board.
But there is some fundamental difficulties in the board, just to begin with, for example. One board member said to us... One board member said to us, and is here in quotes, "The biggest concern," they said, "is getting a full board meeting. Just having people show up for the full board meeting, we understand, is difficult." That gives us concern, because again, they're holding effectively almost a quarter of a billion of your dollars, and that is something that, again, I don't want to be here a month from now, or three months from now, when you say, why did our credit rating go down? And you can't say, well, you never told us that pensions were going to be a weakness. I thought by doing those pension bonds, it became strength. And it only is a strength if we keep the eighty percent.
At that percentage.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Did the board, have they seen this, or were they invited?
The board, you have some board members here, this is presented to the council first, as you orchestrated the, but he has met with some board members.
You know, I think, given the importance of it, and I think you mentioned raising the level of expertise, making sure people are knowledgeable in investments, I would, I would like to see us discuss interviewing board members along, similar to what we do with PRHA, planning, and some of the others in the process.
I think, Mr. Moody, we're going to have to, we need to look at, and I just asked Attorney Ashby, is it in the charter, or it's somewhere written, as to how this board is comprised and...
I believe it's, it's the status, it's a status of, one person has to be from the...
We need to look at that.
From the PR, the old system, the PSR system, it doesn't necessarily state, it states their status in terms of their employment status or their retirement vehicle, but it doesn't give any more detail, much more detail than that. One person, I think, has to be from a financial background, but there are certainly some more details that can be added to those requirements from a board.
Let's take a brief one, perhaps, ask, who is this, Cherry?
I was going to say, can we get Mr. White to give us, she should have all that data to be able to get it in short time, not, correct?
Yes, sir.
Get that too, because I, you know, and I was on personnel for a couple, I don't remember pointing anybody to, last time we pointed anybody to...
I asked that question, when was the last time?
If we ask...
Get her to get all the data for us.
Ask her to send that to us.
I haven't seen.
Shorten it, email it to us quickly, and then when we need, again, Mr. Ashby could bring us up to speed on what our code and charter requirements are, if we need to make some amendments that we want to continue with.
And I would...
If you look at page ten, eleven of the report, you'll see quickly, we see quickly how early this is, page ten and eleven.
I was, yes, I appreciate that, Councilman Cherry, as exactly I was going to point you to, is pages ten to eleven, I think visually speak to what we're talking about. So for example, on page eleven, we talked about, you're the only one of the six that does not define risk tolerance or risk approach. You don't have, for example, definition of prohibited activities or investments. You don't have compliance with policy, you don't compare yourselves that way. There's no asset manager due diligence monitoring, and you'll notice, all the others have that, and that would be in your governance manual. That's the type of thing that you would find in the manual, in the overall investment reports that I'm talking about setting up. So like I said, we've got all the backup of these, if you like it, we've got the people, we spoke to in all these various cities, and, you know, so a lot of that work is here, so we wanted to summarize it.
But one thing about it, after borrowing, what, one hundred and sixty-nine million, we can't afford to get back to the situation we were going into.
And you might want to go to page thirteen, I think that would be the other help. Because there is, again, I think when you look at the three-year, the five-year, and then you look at the others, I don't think I have to say anymore.
Dr. Patton, what do you recommend as we go forward?
I recommend, this is what I recommend, Vice Mayor, is that we, and our CFO, who has been monitoring, marshaling, and we have made similar presentation to you all, and then you all said, let's go have this study done, that this is a priority for us to maintain where we are. I would recommend that we pull together, for you all, all of the information that exists as it pertains to what our code says, what the makeup of the group is, pull these recommendations as we see how they can go forward, and we could have that, all of that to you by Friday in your executive brief package that will be delivered to you. I don't want to email it, because this is, I just want you to have a package. And from there, we be prepared on the twelfth to come back with you with what our first brush recommendations are to get our hands, and this is not something we, that is a surprise to us, we've been working, I'll let the CFO speak to it.
If I could, I think we have some very dedicated retirement board members. I think they're passionate, they come to the board meetings, but they need some help organizing a governance body, governance manual, organizing an investment policy, and I think having a professional person do that, as opposed to, and David Rose very graciously said, Davenport can do it, but we're not going to do it because of conflict of interest, we could have somebody do that and help guide these very nice, professional people that are volunteering their time. Retirement has its own set of laws, its own set of requirements, there is obviously the retiring and the benefit portion of it, which our HR director is part of the retirement board, is an ex officio, there's the investment side, there is the actuary side, there's a lot of technical knowledge that is needed to run a retirement system of this size, and I think we, in Portsmouth, and I think Mr. Rose very graciously pointed out, we need some help guiding that, we need a governance manual, you need an investment help, we need something for these board members to be able to run a very successful retirement system. And I think you have some really good board members that are asking good questions, but they just need some help.
Right.
And I think the advice of, having a pension advisor help us set the parameters is a really good result of this study, and I think that's something that we need to recommend.
And I also think that we need, we staff form a relationship with the board, that, you know, Mrs. Kelly has been attending, but Mrs. Kelly has no, I mean, she can make recommendations, she has no authority. So the board decides what they want to do, because she really, you know, she's not a part of that board, although she's the CFO.
And she's not an investment advisor either.
No, not an investment advisor, but she could see things that she calls to their attention that need to be addressed. So that is what I would recommend, we get everything to you all in your package, you get a chance to look at it, you have two weeks, and then we come back on the twelfth.
Did that package include somebody's pension manual?
Yes.
We have investment policies. GFOA actually has checklist on our investment policies, and, you know, our investment policy, as Dave pointed out, is four pages. I mean, a good investment policy, we just did one for the Hampton Roads Regional Jail, it was twenty pages, not as much money as we have in our investment. So we need something that addresses risk and addresses a lot more factors than our investment policy does right now. Is everybody comfortable with that plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel like Fairfax ought to have a good one.
Yes, we will get, we will get Fairfax. We'll get that. You have some good policies.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Rose.
Even Richmond.
All right, we're ready for our 2016 legislative presentation. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, you go see.
Okay, well, good evening, Vice Mayor Simmons, members of council, city manager and staff. This evening, I'm going to provide you with updates on our 2016 General Assembly legislative initiatives, and then our next steps, and then the new laws and ordinance will be addressed by our city attorney, and with the help of Mr. Baldwin. Quickly, let's look at our 2016 legislative items, and we've divided them into what's been approved, what was denied, and what was pulled. The first thing that was approved was the indexing of the $950,000 in the state budget for the impact to our roads. If you recall, we tried to get it indexed, so that it would, to set it back to the million dollars, which was the original amount of money that was placed in the budget in 2007 before the recession came in, and it was dropped to 950. So our request was to have it indexed, to put it back to the one million, have it indexed for inflation over seven years, that it's been at that amount, and then can pay that off to the host cities, the differences, and then continue to index this amount going forward. The General Assembly instead increased it by $50,000, bringing it up to the original level of one million dollars, and because the budget is only good for two years, it couldn't be indexed going forward. So we were able to get that much done there. This particular item was on the mandatory disclosure for relevant information to sellers of historic properties with our home associations. The issue here was that there is, for homes that are located within home associations, they have disclosures that allow, will provide them with information as to any type of historical details or whatever that's on their homes. If you have a home that's not in, and it's HOA, you don't get those same disclosures. So it was, and balancing the law. So we brought the matter forward, the legislation did pass, the Virginia Housing Commission is going to be studying this over the interim of the General Assembly, I'm told that our meeting should take place sometime in August. Elizabeth River Crossing fines and fees. Our issue here was the exorbitant fines and fees that accompany the tolls. Our bills and our concerns were rolled into House Bill 1069, which became the omnibus toll bill, which passed, and House Bill 1070. The four key components of this legislation are that, one, toll violation and collection processes reform to ensure that Virginia EZ Pass holders are emailed or receive a text when there is a toll violation, at least twice over a ten-day period, providing them with opportunities to add funds to their account before they are subject to civil penalties and administrative fees. The second one was that it ensures that Virginia EZ Pass holders are not subject to toll violations due to equipment malfunctions by requiring toll operators to attempt to reprocess all EZ Pass transactions that fail to process. So there was a double check there. The third key component is that caps for the civil penalties and administrative fees that can be recovered for first-time offenders at court was capped at $2,200 regardless of the number of violations. And then the fourth key component of the omnibus bill is that it extends the period of time before administrative fees can increase from $25 to $100 from thirty days to sixty days. We requested a budget amendment for eight thousand six hundred, I mean, eight million six hundred thousand dollars for the replacement of this structurally deficient bridge. This request came on the heels of our last request for the Churchland Bridge, and being that the state had fully funded, helped us fully fund the Churchland Bridge, they denied this request and wanted us to go through the HB2 process for this. The HB2, which is now known as Smart Scale, they changed it because of the HB2 in North Carolina, and want people, and want people to get confused with that. So it's now known as Smart Scale, so it was recommended that the city go through the HB2 process for this particular funding. Next one. Elimination and reduction of tolls on the Midtown Downtown Tunnel projects. We were able to get a letter sent over from the Transportation, House Transportation Committee, to the VDOT, to ask them to study this even further. Secretary Lane responded in correspondence after General Assembly to Delegate Villanueva, who is the chair of the House Transportation. He delineated in his letter all of what has been done already by the administration to reduce the tolls and on these, on that facility, and he made it exceptionally clear that the administration has done all that it can prudently do to address this matter. We had two expungements, and they're not kind of back-to-back in this presentation, but I might skip over the next one, so you can see the difference. We had this expungement of juvenile nonviolent misdemeanor record requests, and go down to the next one, and then we had this one, the expungement of police court records for no post cases. All expungement bills failed, and there were a bunch of them up there this year. However, with the Senate bill, the chairman of the Senate Public Safety Committee, or Court Committee, agreed to have the matter sent over in a letter to the Secretary of Public Safety to convene a work group to look into the matter and then come back and report our findings by the first of December, for consideration of taking this, the bill off the table and bringing it back to the General Assembly. So at this point in time, the work group has not started yet, we're trying to follow up to find out when they're going to get started with this, and we will keep our eye on this particular one, backup one. Creation of a living wage standard. Our request here was that the General Assembly pass a joint resolution expressing its support for the establishment of a living wage standard in Virginia. Along with our request, several other bills were introduced to either increase the minimum wage, or pass legislation requiring a living wage, all the bills failed. The argument against these bills centered on the notion that these types of bills are bad for spurring economic growth in the Commonwealth, they would be more of a deterrent against job creation, with job loss due to the increased cost of labor to the employers. Virginia's economy has not rebounded as quickly as the nation's after the Great Recession. Many of the higher-paying jobs that were lost in the defense industry, especially in northern Virginia, have not come back. The jobs that have come on board since the recession are lower-paying jobs, the wages are lower, and therefore, the state is realizing lower withholding taxes and lower state taxes being paid. So therefore, at this time, increasing the minimum wage or creating a living wage standard is not seem to be politically feasible.
All they're saying is that the state is not going to create a standard, they're not saying that localities could not do that.
Right, they're saying that the state, well, the statement was, is that they do not pass any resolutions supporting anything, yeah, but...
Yeah, that's just they say.
Yes, the state is not going to do it, right.
You'll see in my presentation, there's a little bit of a twist, there's some rays of light that the governor has left open in terms of that issue.
He's going to speak.
Okay, and then moving on to legislation that was pulled, this particular payment in lieu of taxes for non-taxable real property was a, something that we looked at possibly doing, or trying to get done, where you would deal with real estate or nonprofit organizations that are not paying taxes. And in discussing this idea with legislative services, it was their sense that local governments already have the ability to do this, so until we can delve a little bit further into this matter, we just went on and had the bill pulled at this time, and if it's decided that the city would like to go forward with it, we'll do more research on it and try to bring it back again. And lastly, the Churchland Bridge, it was initially in our package, but we pulled it out before the, because we found out before the General Assembly started that it's been fully funded. And where those X's are, it should say there that the Virginia Department of Transportation provided $21,850,000 of the 35 million that was needed. And then the remainder of it came through revenue sharing, so that was the end of that, so we just pulled that one. Next one. So here... So here you have a list of dates for moving forward to our 2017 state and federal legislative seasons. As you can see, we're going, it begins in July. We hope to be able to have a draft due in September, finalize the drafts in October, adopt them in November, pre-filing ends in December, and to get our patrons on board in early December before the pre-filing ends, and that's the end of my session. In November, it's listed in there. Thank you.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I will tonight go over some of the important legislation that becomes effective July 1 of 2016. This is not comprehensive, but we just wanted to highlight some of the more important matters that will take effect in July, and we will be bringing those that are relevant or that require city code changes to you in the upcoming months. First, House Bill 148, the General Assembly saw fit to give us some additional, an additional 30 days in time in order to change the tax rate. We now have moved from April 15th as the due date to change our real property tax rate to May 15th. Under House Bill 268, it authorizes localities to establish a land bank entity in order to address blighted, abandoned, and taxed delinquent properties. It provides a vehicle for holding those properties and developing those properties. You may recall, I believe it was last year, or it might have been earlier part of this year, there was some discussion in Chesapeake about a business that had been a non-conforming business operating in Chesapeake but had been there for 15 years. In response to that, the General Assembly passed House Bill 367, which provides that if a business license has been issued for a business that is non-conforming according to zoning code but has continuously paid its local taxes, then it is entitled to submit a rezoning permit without any additional charge. Next page. Also, there was a legislation passed that now directs the clerks of court to directly submit to locality any local fees or fines that are collected by the court. Previously, those fees would go through the state and then come back to us through a later allocation. House Bill 832, vacancies in constitutional offices. It allows a city to petition the Circuit Court if there's a vacancy in a constitutional office to, it allows the city to petition for the election to be held at the next general election as opposed to having a special election. It also allows a city to petition if the constitutional office is vacated in the last 12 months. It allows the municipality to petition the Circuit Court to leave that vacancy open until the next election, regular election comes up for that new office, and the court is required to leave that vacancy available. Under the old law, you had to have a special election within a particular period of time. There was no choice, it was simply up to the Circuit Court when they wanted to have the special election. Typically, cities would send their petition and ask for a particular date or ask that the election be held off because, of course, it's an expense to the locality to have these special elections.
Who reports the interim?
The interim, according to code now, is the deputy. Automatically, the deputy, the highest-serving deputy for the remainder of that period of time. So it allows the cities to save a few dollars if you have a vacancy right at the end of someone's term. House Bill 919 has shortened the time period before a municipality can turn off water for a delinquency. Previously, it was a two-month time period. It now allows a municipality to turn off water for unpaid charges after 30 days. Next page. House Bill 1032, vehicle registrations. As you all may know, typically, we do not address out-of-state registered vehicles for the first 30 days, but after 30 days, a municipality can now pass an ordinance such that you can impose a $250 fine on a resident owner who has a vehicle that remains unregistered in Virginia after 30 days. Senate Bill 542 allows the placement of a lien on rental property for the total amount of delinquent water or sewer charges.
Back to that, to the vehicle registration, is that exemption there for military people?
Yes, because it still has to be someone who you could, in fact, go after in terms of a registration. So if it was military, and there's a number of different processes, and of course, because of the military exemption where you automatically registered wherever your home, we could never get to that vehicle anyway. But if, for instance, you were in a position where you should have registered your vehicle here in Virginia, but you did not, those are the vehicles we can go after, but not the military situation.
Okay.
Delinquent water and sewer, under the prior law, we could only put a lien on a property for three months of the sewer bill, water sewer bill. Under the law that becomes effective July 1, we can put the entire amount if it's delinquent, and the owner of the property is the one with the service, we can put the entire amount on a lien on the property.
Okay, I'm good, I didn't, I'm just reading that because it's probably not tenant-tenant water service, okay.
Right.
Tenant-tenant water services.
If the tenant has the water service, there's still some restrictions because we have to deal with the tenant, and so we don't necessarily attach the land if the tenant has the water service.
Probably on a, because the person he rented to didn't pay that water bill.
Correct, there are a different set of resolutions for that.
Okay.
As you all probably know, over the last few years, there have been a number of tax exemptions that have been afforded to disabled veterans and the spouses of veterans who died in service. This July 1, we are adding two new additions to those exemptions. The first one is addresses what we call outbuildings. Under the first reiteration of this tax exemption, it covered the home and an acre around the home. Under House Bill 421, we now place the exemption on what we call outbuildings, that is, your detached garage is now exempt, so long as that outbuilding covers a motor vehicle, house goods, or personal effects, and it's not used for business use. So we've added an additional item, or I should say, we're taking an additional item off the tax roll with regard to veterans in this particular bill. Next page, please. The second bill, House Bill 1203, now clarifies that the exemption for disabled veterans and spouses of deceased veterans also applies to manufactured homes. And that's whether they have wheels or not, and whether, and regardless of the ownership of the land underlying the particular manufactured home. So again, we're taking a few more items off of the tax roll effective July 1. Typically, we do not discuss governors' vetoes, but I put this particular item on tonight as a sort of preview because the council had asked for a living wage discussion, and it sort of buttresses Ms. Neal's discussion. Governor McAuliffe vetoed House Bill 264, and that veto was sustained. House Bill 264 was a bill that attempted to prohibit local government practices that would have required contractors to provide a certain compensation level or benefit, either wage floor or some employment benefit above what was required by state or federal law. In the veto, or in the actual bill, it also mentioned that localities can continue to use economic incentive grants as a means of setting certain wage levels for contractors and their employees. But the governor, in his veto explanation, did make mention of the fact that some of these wage and benefit initiatives were helpful in terms of providing access to qualified, high-skill workers, and were significant in addressing the cost of living and workforce disparities in some localities. And so we, I wanted to include that as a sort of a preface to the city's response we'll have in a meeting or so with regard to the living wage question. So that is still a little bit of ray of sunshine, we do still have some, some ways of affecting that, and we'll get back with further detail in the future. Now, Mr. Baldwin is going to start the proffer discussion.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of council. We are going to discuss our conditional zoning and proffer bill, Senate Bill 549. I think you're pretty aware that we are a regular user of conditional zoning within the city of Portsmouth, and that is a zoning concept that's unique to Virginia. Other states do not use conditional zoning the way we use it, so it's the state's own animal, started in 1975. And this is getting important, we get into this discussion as we look at this bill across the state. Started in 1975, state came back in 78, they modified the conditional zoning, and they banned the use of cash proffers for, for localities, were covered under the 1978 conditional zoning. 1989, it was kind of a critical date, General Assembly came back, they began to allow cash proffers, including cash or real property for high-growth jurisdictions, and primarily that would be Northern Virginia, and includes Hampton Roads. And even though Portsmouth itself is not a high-growth jurisdiction, if you abut one, you're also covered. So in essence, in theory, cash proffers would be allowed in Portsmouth, but, you know, we don't meet the profile of localities having enough growth that you'd normally get into a cash proffer business, but some of these localities in Northern Virginia, for example, just mentioned one, like Loudoun County, I think since 2001, they've been averaging over 3,000 new dwelling units annually. And they're at the point, now they're taking in, at the point of building permit or, and the point of development, over $30 million a year in cash proffers from developers. It's a big business, part of their budget process, and so when the state steps in starts wanting to tweak the proffer business, cash or otherwise, a lot of, a lot of localities, especially the cash proffer ones, get pretty upset. This year, had a bill that was pushed through by the builders primarily targeting Northern Virginia, Senate Bill 549, and this really revised the proffer rules, and even though the target at the time was cash proffers, the bill does not distinguish between the two. So the effect is any locality on a residential project or a rezoning for a mixed-use project with a residential component is now affected by the language of Senate Bill 549. And there's some very interesting language in this bill, and the city attorney is going to have some comments at the end of my presentation, but I think this is an interesting comment that you cannot request or accept an unreasonable proffer. Therefore, if a developer were to submit a proffer, and it would be later determined to be unreasonable, it's the locality's fault for accepting the unreasonable proffer. Remember, proffers are voluntarily submitted in theory, even though there's a fair amount of discussion may go on, but this bill says you shall not request or accept. And again, I just mentioned, I think you're pretty aware, as we do rezoning applications, of course, we have quite a bit of discussion with developers on proffers, suggestions on proffers, and so this is a very tricky statement for us dealing with, that you cannot request or accept something that would be considered unreasonable, and the unreasonable language is in, is in the state code. The second language, another very interesting part of this bill, just reading very quickly, says, "No locality shall deny any rezoning application or proffer condition amendment, where such denial is based in whole or in part on the applicant's failure or refusal to submit an unreasonable proffer or a proffer condition amendment." So for example, if we were to suggest a proffer to them, and they said, "No, I'm not going to do it," we're not, you know, in theory, according to the state code, you're not allowed to deny the rezoning based on the fact you suggested something to them and they did not do that. So that's another kind of interesting language. And again, the language, what's reasonable, unreasonable, has been modified by this bill, but it's, but it's defined in 50.223 or 3.4. It's also in this bill as well. Okay, so here we get into the part, when you get into somebody contesting, in essence, if a local governing, governmental body, a city council, for example, were to deny an action, an aggrieved party, which could be the applicant or the owner, that's the new thing, you know, proffers are typically something we associate with the owners of property. This bill expands the ability to challenge the action to an aggrieved applicant, so that could be, you know, a, you know, a potential buyer, potential developer property, they can bring a case. And here's the interesting language, "The court shall presume, absent clear or convincing evidence of the contrary, that such refusal or failure to submit a proffer that was suggested, requested, or required was a controlling basis for denial." In other words, you're assumed to be guilty for making an action, the assumption is you made it because of that proffer. And at that point, if there's a successful action brought against the locality, the way the bill states, the court can remand this back to the locality, giving you 90 days to rezone the property as requested. And another interesting twist of this bill says, "If you don't do that, the court shall enjoy, enjoy the lookout from interfering with the use of the property as the applicant applied for." And we're not sure exactly what that means, how to do that, but in essence, you know, you have to allow them to do what they asked to do, and that all has to happen within that 90-day timeframe. So as you can imagine, with all the differences going on throughout the state, there's a lot of different localities trying to figure out what in the world to do with the kind of language that's within this bill. And so as we've been talking and monitoring, and there's a lot of discussion going, we're reading all sorts of different responses from localities, and we'll just kind of look down the list. You have some locality, and they're not going to accept cash proffers, they're just going to go straight thumbs up, thumbs down on a rezon act, forget the conditional zoning, we'll deal with that straight up. And we have had a couple of Hampton Roads communities indicating they're leaning towards that type of approach. We have some locales that, "We're going to take the proffers, we're just not going to talk to the applicant about them, bring them in, we'll run them forward, but we're not going to talk about it because we don't want anybody to accuse us of having suggested or whatever." So that's, that's going on. We have some localities that are looking at modifying their application procedures, this is especially happening where they do more cash proffers, requiring a much more extensive review of the impacts, because you have to look back on the bill, what's reasonable and what's unreasonable, trying to figure out what that is. In our case, very difficult because a lot of our proffers are outside of the sort of normal realm of public improvement, like build a school, or build a fire station, or something of that nature. We have some localities looking to require certification statements coming in from the applicant, saying, "I'm certifying these proffers are reasonable, and, you know, you're not going to be considered unreasonable as defined by the bill," so they're looking at whether or not there's a way to get the applicant to certify that. A number of localities have been in the cash proffer business, are indicating they're no longer going to accept cash proffers, and I think on a lot of these, the real question's going to be what happens on these rezoning applications if they move forward and the cash proffers aren't part of the application? We don't know what that's going to be. Some localities are looking at using alternative regulatory methods, I'm not sure exactly where that goes, but for example, maybe using more use permits as opposed to, to issues with projects later than hitting the upfront at the proffer step. And then there are localities discussing going back to the General Assembly and trying to get the General Assembly to modify this bill to provide some relief to some of the provisions of it. So, so what are we doing? Again, as we've been looking at trying to come up with a, sort of a cohesive strategy, we are continuing to engage with other communities, kind of see what else other people are doing, and we'll certainly continue to brief city councils as more information comes available as to what that is. But because of the uncertainties created by the bill, the planning department, so we're prepared to eliminate all discussion of proffers related to residential rezoning, that'd be effective July 1. And we've also passed on caution to anyone else in the process, you know, the way this bill is structured, it doesn't say a proffer suggested by the planning department, the planning director, it says the locality. Anyone involved in the process, and that could be anyone on staff, it could be the planning commission, it could be city council members, anyone in a capacity of reviewing this application could be, could be potentially, and I'll let the city attorney speak that a little bit more detail, but potentially considered suggesting proffers. So as an example, if someone from the engineering department suggested something, theoretically that might be construed as a suggested proffer. So we're basically taking the approach that, that we are just not going to discuss proffers with anyone. So if you want to come in and submit proffers, and we're So if you want to come in and submit proffers, then we're not discussing that.
So, does that mean that, like, the people with the, that take care of children in their homes, whatever?
That would not be the case.
We routinely say, "Oh, well, how about if you..."
Right. That'd be like a use permit. You're okay with that. This would be on a rezoning application.
If you're rezoning a restaurant, and at the diner, we say, "Well, would you consider closing at 11:00 instead of 2:00 a.m.?"
Yeah, that would be okay. Again, that's commercial. This is residential.
This is strictly residential.
But let's say we have a large scale, and I think we know we have some properties out there, including, this bill also applies to properties that have previously approved conditional zoning. So if someone were to come back and said, "I'd like to modify the proffers related to pick the residential property," again, we have a number of them. If they were to come and make that suggestion, that discussion gets covered by this bill, because it's not just new projects. If somebody wanted to talk about amending existing projects as well. So, and this, again, residential projects or mixed-use project with a residential component. And I will add, again, to the sort of the level of uncertainty in some of the stuff, because of the nature of our zoning ordinance with mixed-use zoning, the request for the residential component may not be part of the original application. They may come in subsequent to that, and we don't know how that might come into play. They say, "Well, we want to bring in this project, and it's affected by that proffer that was put in place before," because the zoning would have already had the residential component potentially involved. So that's just...
Thank you. I guess, Dr. Pat, then, and the city attorney, I just need to talk about this a little bit last meeting, definitely part of our legislative package, that part about getting with the state about trying to fix this. Another thing about...
Fix the proffer where they are.
Because, I know that, I don't think it's what they intend, but these non-cash proffers are the only ones we have. And if they go away, we have...
Right. As you are aware, we spend a lot of time with applicants doing what we would call quality control.
Right.
Trying to make sure we get the best possible project, whether that be conceptual site plans, architectural renderings, building materials, other site improvements that may come with a project, depending on the size of the project.
Another thing, we have a lot of repeat developers. So they're used to coming in, offering proffers to us, and so, when they come in offering one now, on July 2, you say you're not going to talk about them, but they still could be deemed unreasonable by somebody. Correct?
The not being willing to talk to them?
No, the proffer.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, one of the things we have is...
So are we considering that statement you talked about, to have them say, "This is not..."
Yes. We're looking, and the city attorney will get it out.
Because they don't offer them to us anyway, because they're used to doing it, they've been doing it here for years.
It is normal business practice for us to do that.
And let me say a couple of things, council member, just to highlight a couple of points and address that particular one. Again, the legislation addresses proffer suggested or accepted by the locality. It's a new law, there's no court cases that have addressed it. We know locality is, in its use, is meant to address folks in the application process, but it doesn't have a limit, a clear limit on what that means. And so, because this law has a high standard in terms of our defense, attorney's fees and costs associated with it, as Mr. Baldwin has said, it's our suggestion that everyone stay out of that discussion. But you're right. As Mr. Baldwin has said, that's why some locality said they're not taking proffers, because you could end up accepting a proffer that's deemed unreasonable vote, and you may have an issue just because you took it in. And so, the planning staff is going to continue to evaluate its options. Of course, each application is a little different, and we don't know what those proffers may be in any particular application. And so, as we go forward, we're going to put some things before you, and probably have some offline discussions, because this is developing over time in terms of how we address this. But one thing Ms. Neal did make mention of, to the extent that we do want to put out a legislative response, we're going to have to do that very quickly, so that we can get in line with other municipalities and VML, so we can get that addressed very quickly going forward.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, that completes their presentation. I have one thing that we found out as it pertains to the legislative package of the state. The General Assembly did approve $500,000 for the first year, which would be 2017, and $250,000 for the second year for the Sports Hall of Fame. In the language of the General Assembly, it says, "The second year to the city of Portsmouth for this facility. Prior to the payment of any grants provided for these amounts to the city of Portsmouth for this facility, and no later than November 1, 2016, the city of Portsmouth shall provide to the chairman of the House Appropriations and Senate Finance Committee a report detailing the financial condition of the regional tourism entity and a plan to achieving its long financial stability." Thirdly, it says that the report shall include the following for the three most recent fiscal years, a statement of financial position summarizing the assets, liabilities, and net assets of the organization, and, A, a statement of activity showing total attendance, income, and expenses, and a statement of cash flow. It is my understanding that the language is such because the city of Portsmouth receives the grants for the Sports Hall of Fame, which is a pass-through from the state legislature, and you all are aware of that. But the report that has to come forward will have to come from the Sports Hall of Fame, because we don't have that data.
And Dr. Whitaker asked for that report last year, and we haven't seen it yet, so...
So this is what the state is...
So they have to produce it, they want the state's money in, and I guess maybe they are getting, you want to get to see it.
Right. Okay.
Can you send us a copy?
Yes, I shall.
Are there any liaison reports?
Yes, I have one.
Do you want to get them? You don't have much...
Here we go, City Regional Jail. Our current superintendent is retired, and we formulated a personnel committee that Archer from Newport News, Baker from Chesapeake, Roberts from Hampton, Morgan from Newport News, Meyer from Norfolk, and of course, me.
He's the chair. Aren't you the chair?
Well, of this committee, I'm not. This is a committee...
You're the chairman of the authority.
Yeah, yeah. And they're going to start working on it starting this month, well, July. And so, we'll keep you informed on the progress.
We have no items for close, right?
No, but we do, I would like to, there's an agenda item for CIPSA that's up for vote that I think we need to defer, because we still do not have enough information to reach a conclusion.
You're welcome to make that motion out there.
Yeah. I wanted to discuss that.
I don't think we defer it twice.
Mm-hmm.
I think we got it.
I think we need to move ahead.
One way or the other.
It's your option, whether you defer it, vote on it, get rid of it, it's your option. Should we leave? Over finish?
I have a question, Dr. Pat. I sent you an email requesting information as far as who were in the positions of the risk management position and the procurement, and you hadn't responded to that, because at our last meeting, Mr. Ammons said that under his authority, under the code, that he could reject proposals. In that code language, it required approval of the director of procurement and risk management. And I asked you who were in those positions, and I hadn't gotten a response from you.
If you sent it, Mr. Whitaker, it's an oversight, I didn't...
You didn't receive it?
I mean, I haven't seen it.
Right, okay. Well, let me ask you now, Ben. Who's in the position of director of risk management and procurement?
The procurement director has just resigned, and Mr. South, I don't know Mr. South's first name.
Richard Strauss.
Richard Strauss was the, was the city's procurement, risk manager, risk manager. And I think his last day was one day last week. The city has a procurement administrator. It doesn't have a procurement director.
Because, I believe in the code, it specifically says the director of procurement.
The city has, in my tenure, has always had a procurement administrator. I don't know what the positions are or were.
In previous years, there was a director of risk management and procurement, that position was eliminated a few years ago.
All right.
So, then, the approval that was done, was that according to the code?
Yes, I mean, it's according to...
Because it said it had to be approved by the director of risk management.
So it was a one person?
There was one person that was over...
That's had both titles?
Yes.
Procurement and risk management.
This person just resigned?
No.
The risk manager resigned. There was one person that was over procurement and risk management. That position was eliminated through a budget cut.
That was John Brooks.
A few years ago, and the code was never changed.
Years ago.
So right now, our head is purchasing the person.
John's been gone.
So, how could he have exercised that authority if it was not available through the code?
He is the city's procurement administrator, and that's the position, that was the position that was created when the city eliminated, or years ago, not my tenure, John Brooks has been gone a long time. The city created a procurement administrator and a separate risk manager, and that is what the city has.
Well, I guess then, for our attorney, is that something that we need to be advised on? Because if he exercised an authority that the code requires an approval of a director of procurement and risk management, and that was not done, then we need to be advised on whether what was done was proper and legal, because we're about to vote on something that could expose us if it was not done properly.
Dr. Whitaker, my understanding is that the procurement administrator reports and serves in the finance department. So it's been my understanding since I arrived that that role has been filled by the chief financial officer.
What role?
The reporting for the administrator, the supervision of the procurement administrator has been the chief financial officer.
Yeah, but that's not the question I'm asking. In the code, it specifically says that in order for the purchasing administrator to reject the bid, it has to be approved by the director of procurement and risk management. That was not done. So how could he reject the bid that was not in accordance with the code? And if it is, if it isn't, where does that put us? If the code is required. And it does say, "Shale."
I understand, I'll have to take a look at that, and I'll certainly get you a response when we convene.
Sounds like the code needs to catch up with that.
Well, there are a lot of code items that we need to address across the board, from the beginning to the end.
So you're advising us to go ahead on and vote on that without having...
The procurement code, much like some other aspects of this code, has some adjustments that need to be made. My understanding has been that those roles were filled whenever that adjustment was made several years ago, that those reporting requirements were adjusted to the chief financial officer who...
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that the code says it's supposed to be approved.
I certainly understand.
I just want, I just want to be clear. You're telling us to go ahead on and vote on this item, even though the code was not followed? I just want to make sure I'm clear on that.
I'm suggesting to you that...
It's not a yes, it's either yes or no. Are you telling us we're okay legally? Because we've received letters from vendors who have also observed this process.
I understand. I understand, Dr. Whitaker. And in terms of a challenge with regard to the procurement administrator's decision, I believe that the consultation with the chief financial officer is the equivalent of what has been requested in terms of the supervision with regard to the code.
Okay. Do we need to break for dinner, or...
It's almost 7:00.
Yes. Dear Lord, thank you for the food. We're about to receive for the nourishment of our bodies and...